The journey of a company secretary has been a journey of evolution. The profession has witnessed a change from finding a place on corporate India to becoming an entrepreneur, to becoming a guiding and advising dot in corporate India. Ladies and gentlemen, amongst us we have a company secretary who was the first elected president of the Institute of Company Secretaries of India, CSR Krishnan, who have been part of this journey.
Our special session devils on the same and to discuss, we request none other than CSR Krishnan to please join the dais.
With a big round of applause, ladies and gentlemen.
I would also request our council members, yes, Ashish Karodia, to please come on the dais.
Thank you, sir.
I request CS Manish Gupta, President ICSI, to please come on the dais and welcome our guest with a planter.
CSR Krishnan was the first elected president of the Institute of Company Secretaries of India that at the age of thirty-five in the year nineteen seventy, being the youngest ever president. He was re-lectured for two further consecutive terms, thus holding presidency for three consecutive terms, the longest ever held by anyone as president of the institute. He was nominated by the Ministry of Corporate Affairs on the Narayanantra Committee on Corporate Governance as well as on the LLP Committee. He also represented Ministry of Finance on the Indo-German Joint Business Council Meetings. He is a managing director of Associated Global VAT Limited, VAT LLP, and independent director on the Board of Key Tech Industries, India Limited, and MB Industries Limited. He is a BCOM Honors MA and a fellow member of the Institute of Company Secretaries of India. I request here Ashish Karodia, council member, ICSI, to kindly take over the session. Thank you.
It's a proud pledge for all of us to be part of this fifty-first national convention at Varanasi. The city known as Banaras, Kashi from ages, ages is older than history, older than tradition, older even than legend. Like Banaras is a historic place from ages, the remarkable journey of fifty-five years of ICSI is not though older than ages but have traveled miles ahead and received a very remarkable position today. Friends, our journey from certifying the annual return to secretarial auditor, the journey from CS in employment to KMP, the journey to approx. seventy thousand members, the journey to seventy-two chapters, four regional office, and to CCGIT and to CCGIT under establishment, the journey where we got the recognition as the master of compliance and master of corporate governance. Nineteen fifty-three में फ्रेंड्स जब लोकसभा का बिल, लोकसभा में बिल पास होने के लिए आए थे कंपनी से, यह तो लोकसभा के सदस्यों का एक विचार था कि जिस तरह से मॉडर्न गवर्नमेंट, आधुनिक सरकार को चलाने के लिए सेकेट्रेट क्या हो सकता है, उसी तरह से कॉरपोरेट जगत को चलाने के लिए कंपनी सेकेटरी भी उसमें होने चाहिए और यहीं से हमारे कंपनी सेकेटरी की महत्वता को स्वीकार किया गया था. And finally, the Institute of Company Secretaries of India was set up and registered as a company on fourth October nineteen sixty-eight under section twenty-five of Companies Act nineteen fifty-six with its registered office New Delhi to regulate and develop the profession of company secretaries. In nineteen eighty, the government enacted the Company Secretary's Act nineteen eighty to make provision for regulation and development of profession of company secretaries and converting the institute into a statutory body with effect from first January nineteen eighty-one. जिसको हम उदय दिवस के रूप में भी अभी मनाते हैं. The remarkable journey of fifty-five years that this institute has undertaken since its inception marks the dedicated efforts, firm commitment, and outstanding contribution of all those who have been part of this remarkable journey. Company secretaries since the beginning of the profession in year nineteen sixty-eight have been strengthening the governance culture in corporate and have played an important role in advising the corporate in decision-making with their expert knowledge, business document, and critical thinking. Shrimati Droupdi Murmu, Honorable President of India at the fifty-fifth Foundation Day of ICSI on the, on October fourth, two thousand twenty-three, mentioned that the future of corporate governance in India depends on company secretary's action and called for
Ashish Jee, and friends.
adoptability to change the updated skills to meet new challenges, commending ICSI for
It's a very substantial privilege for me to be present here this afternoon in this
its efforts. She also urged company secretaries to serve not just as legal professional but also as trustee of the nation's development, emphasizing the importance of good governance
holy city of Banaras, about which my dynamic president, Manish Jee, and my colleague, Dhyan
and ethics. The responsibility of company secretaries have altered over the last five decades
Anjay, spoke volumes yesterday.
in response of fast-changing economy, industrial environment, and the growth of the demand
Echoing the startling revolutions made by Manish and Dhyan Anjay, I may be permitted
for corporate governance, ethical business practices. Today, we have esteemed presence of CSR Krishnan, Sir, former President ICSI for this special session, who will take us through the journey of company secretary profession,
to add that East India Company in eighteen hundred and two annexed Banaras and ceded
how it evolved over the period of time, its achievement, and expectation in the time to come. Thank you. Please, sir.
it to Bengal Presidency. That is the international ramification about which our vice president spoke yesterday. This East India Company came to India in sixteen hundred and eleven as the world's largest multinational company, dealing primarily in spices, tea juice, and rubber. They made huge profits and had large shareholding, but had a very distasteful record of performance because they treated shareholders like a dust, paid paltry dividends to them, and repatriated all their profits to United Kingdom. The shareholders complained to the Crown and Crown decided to dissolve in eighteen seventy-two the East India Company and took control over itself. In the process, assured in limited liability in India, along with came the UK Companies Act and with that the institution of managing agencies and secretaries and treasurers and the indispensable concomitant, the company secretary. That went on and what they did was, they set up several offices in one building with company secretaries handling most of those functions. This East India Company was responsible for creating so many manipulations and malpractices that eventually led to the first Indian Companies Act in the pre-independence era of nineteen hundred and thirteen, which perpetuated this regime of managing agencies and secretaries and treasurers. Our industrialists were peeved with the kind of manipulations and malpractices that were going on, but they could do nothing because this is all pre-independent India. But as soon as India became independent in nineteen forty-seven, government constituted a committee in nineteen fifty known as the Baba Committee, which took four years to deliberate about these malpractices and came out the first indigenous Indian Companies Act in nineteen fifty-six and gave a severe blow to the system of managing agencies and secretaries and treasurers by abolishing them altogether. That was a monumental achievement and very much required in the country at that time. But they did not stop. They continued that system through the backdoor assistance of the company secretaries. Each company secretary was at that time handling ten to fifteen to twenty companies of which he was company secretary. This went on and nothing could be done. At the same time, there was a company amendment bill which was presented in the parliament in nineteen fifty-three by Mr. C D Deshnu, the then Finance Minister, because he was getting numerous requests and pressure from the parliamentarians that please bring about a mandatory provision for the appointment of company secretaries in the companies in India, to which he responded that time is not yet ripe to bring this mandatory provision because we do not have adequate company secretaries in India and therefore we shall take steps, the government will initiate steps to set up this profession and eventually when we have adequate number of Indian company secretaries, we shall go ahead with this mandatory provision. When the company secretaries in India, at that time predominantly in Calcutta and Bombay, got a witness of this announcement, they quickly formed an institute known as Institute of Secretaries in Calcutta in nineteen fifty-six, comprising mainly the UK factions of the company secretaries and the corporation of secretaries. And there were the requests also to the ministry to convene a conference of company secretaries in Calcutta, which it was done in nineteen fifty-six, inaugurated by the then Chief Minister, Dr. B C Roy. And he was very happy that this institute has come up. But within a year, there was internal scobbles between these two factions of Bombay and Calcutta, Bombay represented by Corporation of Secretaries UK and Calcutta represented by Chartered Institute of Secretaries UK. The Bombay faction said that we want the headquarters of the institute to be in Bombay. Calcutta people responded saying that we have eighty percent of our members are in Calcutta. Why should twenty percent have the headquarters shifted to Bombay? There was no meeting ground and the so-called institute collapsed to our good luck. When the institute collapsed, Dr. Roy felt very unhappy. He summoned Mr. D L Marjun Darai, ICSI Secretary of the Ministry, saying that government should initiate now steps to set up an Institute of Company Secretaries of India and take control of the whole situation in their own hands. That is how nineteen sixty, the government decided to form an advisory board for the profession of company secretaries, inviting in the council, several government nominees, Ministry of Education included, and three eminent company secretaries of top British companies such as Unilever, Burden Company, and Imperial Tobacco, today known as ITC. And they decided to conduct the examinations. They issued a prospectus from the government. I bought this prospectus which was issued by the government at that time. The costs of this prospectus is fifty paise, just fifty paise. This prospectus printed by the government of India and it outlines in detail what these syllabus and pass marks. The pass percentage required is fifty-sixty percent in each paper and in aggregate also sixty percent with the further proviso that you have to clear all these six groups in one attempt and if you fail to do so, you have to reappear. Such stringent conditions stipulated completely in disregard to the fact that for UK examination, the pass percentage required was only forty percent. The point is that the UK members on the council of our institute were trying to discourage our Indians from taking this examination so that if you stipulate sixty percent, not many will pass. They succeeded to some extent, but there were some diehards like me who decided to take this examination and in the very first batch which came out in nineteen sixty-one, I am part of that, we had eight people who qualified and we were awarded GDCS certificate. And can you imagine, the examination results were published in the newspapers. It was such a famous examination conducted by the government of India. So this is the outcome of this and then they issued this certificate signed by secretary to the government of India, GDCS, very, very valuable certificate. So over a period of time, nearly ten years the examination went on despite sixty percent marks and we had close to fifteen hundred members already qualified and got GDCS. That is the time the government said, we cannot continue this, holding these examinations from the government and therefore it is time we hand over to an institute which we should set up. So they set up an Institute of Company Secretaries of India on fourth October nineteen sixty-eight as a section twenty-five company under the Indian Companies Act. And all the council members of the outgoing advisory council were automatically brought in as a council member of this institute. They made a proviso though that we shall add in due course, one GDCS nominee on this council from the government of India. And I was lucky enough to be nominated because I was the senior most GDCS at that particular time. In the very first meeting which I attended, I made a plea that we cannot have this UK examination in India when Indian examinations are already being carried out. The council members rejected me outright and they said, don't make such a farcical suggestion, we cannot discontinue the UK examinations. The chairman of the board, Mr. Prasad, the secretary of the ministry, was presiding over this meeting and he did not like this comment from them. And after the meeting was over, he called me to his chamber and said, Mr. Krishnan, you are outvoted, you are single person, this cannot carry on. Therefore, we shall have the elections of the institute now under the Companies Act. So general elections were held among all the members and three of us were nominated, elected as members of the council, Mr. Nagarajan from Simpson &amp; Company and Mr. Suran Aranjan from Bangalore from Bharat Heavy Plates Investors Limited, plus myself. Having achieved that election, we got three council members now, some strength we have got that. Then the question arose, we should also elect the president, who should be an elected president. So the elections were held for the president. I was requested by lot of my supporters to field myself as a candidate. The UK institute nominee fielded one of their candidates because they did not want to lose control of the UK institute and examinations. His name is Mr. P L Jethli. Elections were held. I was elected by a thumping majority because all the GDCS members population voted for me and the UK people were defeated. When the election results were announced, they said the secretary of the ministry who was the conducting these elections as a scrutineer, he has done something wrong and the matter went to the High Court against the secretary to the government of India and the High Court dismissed the petition outright, saying that you cannot move such a petition against the government of India. Therefore, the elections are held valid and never again should you come into this kind of an arena. So that was how the president was then elected and I was very lucky that everything went in my favor. After the election results had announced, Mr. Prasad felt very relieved that the High Court judgment against him, against the case against him has come in his favor and now he said, Mr. Krishnan, you please relieve me altogether and take away all this, institute examinations, papers, money, and everything. We are, we have had enough of it, ten years we have suffered, now as an institute president, you take charge. I said, sir, I have just come to you after getting the election result. Let me go back to my office in Calcutta and inform my chairman and seek his permission to be the president of the institute. He said, okay, you come back tomorrow. And I went back to my chairman and I said, I have this problem. He told me, fine, once you are elected as the president of a government institution like this, you must treat this assignment as part of your company's assignment and you have full authority to spend any amount of money and any of the resources of the company for the furtherance of the institute's function, provided you will not take a single penny from the institute for carrying out that work. With that authority, I went back to Delhi, met Mr. Prasad and I said, sir, yes, I am now ready to take charge of the institute from the government of India. Two conditions, you please give me six months' time because tomorrow morning I cannot handle this institute. Please give me six months' time, by this time we will have an office, by this time we would have taken charge of everything, we would have set up the coaching material and everything. I said, please, for six months, send two of your officers on deportation to my institute, the person who is working as the secretary of the institute and the person who is holding the examinations in utter confidence. He agreed and they came. Then Mr. Prasad handed over me a cheque of rupees one point fifty lakh as a contribution from the government to run the institute. I smiled, I said, sir, this one point five lakhs will not suffice even for a month's expenses. He smiled, he said, you take this and I know you can manage it and if there is a problem, you can always come back to me. I said, fine, sir. I returned to my office, my own office in Delhi, first looked for an office. We took an office on a rent of rupees one thousand eight fifty at Ranji Janshi Road to set up our own office because my amount available to me is rupees one point five lakhs. So I had to pay one eighteen fifty rupees as rent, then the salaries of others. Then the main problem arose, how to carry on these examinations, how to conduct this postal coaching and tutians, postal tutians. I approached my professor, Mr. Professor M C Shukla from SRCC, head of Department of Delhi University Commerce, and went to him with this proposal, sir, please accept our director of coaching assignment. He smiled for a moment. He said, you are my student and you are the president. I said, yes, sir. He said, how did you make this proposition? I said, I am making this proposition because your counterpart, Professor T S Grewal, also from SRCC, is the director of coaching of the Institute of Chartered Accountants of India. Therefore, we are now going to be parallel. He said, yes, you are right. He said, I am willing to do that, provided it is only for a period of two years and you will have to have an understudy so that he can take over. I said, fine. And he said, will you be able to afford my fees? I said, yes. He said, your institute is so rich. I said, don't worry about that, sir. You tell me your fees, we shall pay. He indicated a figure, that fee was paid by my company. And so the institute is off to a glorious start. He took charge of the coaching. So now my main issue about the coaching examination is all set of the highest standards. Now the question arises, we cannot do all the work sitting in Delhi or in Calcutta. Calcutta is my personal office for my work. We need to have the regional councils, regional offices, then only our institute can spread its wings. So we had a meeting in the council and we said, now we have only one point five lakhs with which, what are we going to do? How are you going to pay the rent if you want an office in Bombay, one in Calcutta, one in Madras? Then Mr. Nagarajan, Secretary of Simpson, chipped in, saying that, Mr. Krishnan, I will give you Mount Road office of my office, two thousand five hundred square feet, free of charge for the SIRC. And we did that. Then came Calcutta, sometime from Calcutta, my Tata Group, we had an office in forty-three Charungi Tata Center, all of you must be knowing, but there was forty-one Charungi, also we had an office from where I gave EIRC office, three thousand square feet with an executive officer, fully paid by my company. Now the question arose, Bombay, a tough nut to crack. However, I said, I need not waste much time on that because my company has six offices in Ballard Estate and Nariman Point and I offered at Ballard Estate, Mangalore Street, three thousand square feet, free of charge forever as the Western India Regional Council with an executive officer. So now we are well set for the regional councils. We nominated a regional council in Calcutta comprising eight managing directors of multinational companies such as Metalbox, Indian Aluminium, Shawalas, India Tobacco, Williamson Mega, etc. So our institute started getting support from all the multinational companies and slowly GDCS became a prized position for whoever had already got it. Thereafter, we went on expanding. Now the main question arose, we have still not entered the battleground. The real battle is yet to be fought. We have taken the easy route so far. The issue was, we have to eliminate the UK examinations being conducted in India and as long as that examination will be conducted in India, our institute cannot survive, our institute must collapse. So I went back to the secretary to the government of India, Mr. Prasad. I said, sir, this is an issue. He said, then how are you going to tackle it? I said, you permit me to go to London and meet the president of the UK institute and tell him that this is the position that persuade him to abandon his examinations. I went and met the president of the UK institute, Mr. Harris, he is the secretary of British Gas also. I went as secretary of British Steel in India, our offices were not very far. So when he met me, he said, you are the president of the Indian institute? I said, yes. He said, but I don't see any grey hair on you. I said, age a factor to be the president of anybody? If the United States can elect John F. Kennedy at the age of thirty-eight to be, to be the president of USA, why can't ICSI have a president who is only thirty-five? Is that a problem? He said, no, no, that's a, by the way, so come on, let us discuss. I said, yes, sir, I have come to you with a request that we have been conducting, we means the government of India, for the last ten years, this examination with the ultimate aim that we shall have our own company secretaries and we are going to come out with a amendment in the law like your section one seventy-seven of the UK Companies Act, providing for a mandatory appointment of company secretaries, we are going to do likewise. He said, so? I said, so please discontinue your examinations in the first instance and we cannot have two examinations here. He got very infuriated and said that you should not make such a suggestion to me. We are the largest institute in the world. You are a pygmy, you are a new arrival. I said, maybe you are the largest. We will also become largest ten years from now, don't worry about that. He said, no, no question. You wind up your institute and merge it with our institute. I said, that will never happen. I departed, came back to Delhi frustrated, went to Mr. Prasad, the secretary, he said, how was your meeting? I said, sir, I am materially frustrated and humiliated and you cautioned me not to let the institute collapse because at Dr. B C Roy, when he inaugurated the institute, he made this condition, please make sure the institute flourishes, now our institute is going to collapse. He said, so what is your suggestion? I said, I have only one suggestion, lender of the last resort and that is, you have to tell the Reserve Bank of India to stop the release of the foreign exchange. He said, very tough assignment, we are not going to be able to do that because no minister in the government has any authority to instruct the Reserve Bank of India, which is an autonomous body. However, there is nothing to prevent you as president going to meet the Reserve Bank of India governor, we shall support you. I said, okay, sir. I said, okay, that's my last chance to survive. I will have no face to show to my friends and to the government and in my own company I may lose my job. I said, okay, let me take a chance now. I fixed a meeting with the governor, Mr. P C Bhattacharya ICS, and I said, I have this request that UK examinations must be discontinued and the fruition you are releasing should stop. I departed, came back to Delhi frustrated. Went to Mr. Prasad, the secretary, he said, how was your meeting? I said, sir, I am utterly frustrated and humiliated. And you cautioned me not to let the institute collapse because at Dr. B.C. Roy, when he inaugurated the institute, he made this condition, please make sure the institute flourishes. Now our institute is going to collapse. He said, so what is your suggestion? I said, I have only one suggestion, lender of the last resort and that is you have to tell the Reserve Bank of India to stop the release of the foreign exchange. He said, very tough assignment. We are not going to be able to do that because no minister in the government has any authority to instruct the Reserve Bank of India, which is an autonomous body. However, there is nothing to prevent you as president going to meet the Reserve Bank of India governor. We shall support you. I said, okay, sir. I said, okay, that's my last chance to survive. I will have no face to show to my friends and to the government and in my own company, I may lose my job. I said, okay, let me take a chance now. I fixed a meeting with the governor, Mr. P.C. Bhattacharya, ICS. And I said, I have this request that UK examinations must be discontinued and the foreign exchange you are releasing should stop. He said, you are making a very arbitrary recommendation. It has grave implications. Why are you doing that? I said, for two reasons. A, countries facing a severe foreign exchange crisis. So when the Government of India itself is conducting these examinations, why are you releasing foreign exchange which is not required? Secondly, there is no need for the UK to conduct these examinations in India because why should my Indian students study the company law of UK and the secretarial practice of UK? They have to know the company law of India and secretarial practices here. He said, yes, there is some point. He lifted the phone and rang up Mr. Prasad's secretary in the ministry, said that Mr. Krishnan has come with this suggestion. What is the government's stand? And Mr. Prasad said, he is right, he has come on our behest. And we would very much like this stoppage of the foreign exchange. Immediately, Mr. Bhattacharya conceded and he told me, yes, we are agreeable to really stop it from tomorrow morning. I said, sir, I am very, very grateful to you. Kindly do me one little favor that I am going back to Calcutta in the evening. Before I leave Bombay, tell your office to give me that notification. He called his exchange controller, they gave me the notification too. I took the flight at five o'clock. Landed straight to the Statesman editor's office at nine P.M. because the material for next morning's newspaper was about to be printed. The editor was a friend of mine, Mr. Parameshwar. He said, what is the urgency? I said, read this letter, this is the urgency. Oh, yes, this is very far-reaching consequences. I said, to my advantage, therefore do it. And he did it. Next morning, it was flashed on the front page in Statesman Calcutta, which was the biggest newspaper at that time in India. And I got brig-bad from a large section of so-called UK company secretaries. What the hell you think of yourself? You have done this and that and that. In my own group company, we had about ten members of the UK Institute. They also tried to meet me. I said, please, don't disturb your order, you continue your work. This has nothing to do with the company, you mind your business. Then their local president took me to Calcutta Club for a lunch. That was the practice those days, that if you want to discuss somebody, you invite him for lunch. And when we discussed, he said, Mr. Krishnan, now what do we do? I said, you decide to stop the examination and that has been decided now because the government is not releasing foreign exchange. He said, no, we can find some way out. I said, if you find some way out, that will be very breach of fair. And I shall take a proactive step with the enforcement director. Let me caution you that. I cannot allow that. So short of that, have you any proposal? He said, no, then you tell me. I said, look. As a spirit of compromise, I am willing to offer for your consideration that all the present company secretaries in various companies who have passed the UK examination, we shall offer them membership of the institute, Suomoto. B, all those functioning as deputy secretaries or as secretaries or any other capacity other than the company secretary will be allowed the membership of the institute provided they take the final examination of our institute. And lastly, with regard to students who are at various stages of the UK examination, preliminary, intermediate or final, should switch immediately over to our corresponding intermediate or final examination. Provided and provided, all these three conditions are limited for the next six months. You must exercise your option within that six months. After that, the door for UK people is permanently closed in India. You cannot come in there and that is the end of the story. Therefore, the discontinuance of the foreign exchange released by the Reserve Bank of the Government of India is the beginning of the end of the UK Institute and their examinations in India. And the emergence of ICICI, that's why you and I are meeting and smiling today. Fine. So this part is over now. Now the question arises. We are public sector undertakings. And since ICICI is part of the government and we are functioning as emissary of the government. I approached the Bureau of Public Enterprises, I says, sir, this is what has happened. And very soon we shall have a provision like UK that every company will have to have a compulsory company secretary from qualified from our institute. In the meantime, and in anticipation of that, in public sector enterprises, you can straight away institute instruction that every company will have to have a company secretary who is a member of our institute. The directors of public enterprises felt convinced, he said, yes, you have a point. And he issued a circular after talking to the secretary of the ministry, yes, he is right, you can go ahead. They issued circular to all the public enterprises in India and the state enterprises too, that henceforth, no company secretary will be on deportation from any government department to a government company. He will have to be appointed full-time as a member of the institute. He has to be qualified as a member of the institute and there is no question of deportation. The system of deportation must end forthwith. Excellent, great achievement. Yet, suddenly I find in the newspaper they add the item that Steel Authority of India Limited, the biggest company in India at that time, Public Sector, has appointed on deportation somebody from the Prime Minister's Office as a secretary of the steel for a period of two years on a deportation allowance of twenty percent extra. I went to the minister, Mr. H.R. Coakley, I said, sir, this is visiting our entire effort. And you are a minister for company affairs, it is striking against your own department's policy. He said, you are right. I said, sir, you must have a word with the minister, Mr. Kumar Mangalam, Steel Minister. He said, I will do it. He did not do it immediately. I had a parliament question raised and the minister had to reply to the parliament that he is withdrawing that deputist and the matter goes back. The secretary goes back to the Prime Minister's Office from where he came. And Steel Authority Chairman asked me to join the selection board for the selection of a company secretary for Steel Authority of India Limited from amongst the members of our institute, which I did. So that was the end as for the Bureau of Public Enterprises. So we have made great indoors and things have moved pretty well. Then came Administrative Staff College of India, the principal of which was from NPSN, which is leaning towards Bengal for obvious reasons. And I approached him, I said, sir, you are conducting this company secretary's course in collaboration with the UK Institute company secretaries, ignoring us completely. He said, no, I didn't know about you. I said, you do know, I am telling you now, we are the institute for company secretaries and not the UK institute, they don't have existence in India. He said, what are you saying, all the company secretary? I said, they are members of the UK institute. That doesn't mean they are members of my institute. Therefore, from now on, any course for company secretaries to be conducted by Administrative Staff College of India has to be done in conjunction with us. And there will be no more acceptance of your course. He went back to the Minister of Education that Mr. Krishnan is threatening us like this. And the secretary of the Education Ministry contacted the NCA and said, yes, he is right, you cannot conduct these courses. So the principal sent his emissary to me saying that, look, let us have a compromise. Let's have fifty-fifty, fifty percent from UK Institute has the faculty and fifty percent from yours. I said, no. I shall have hundred percent and nothing, not a penny from the UK Institute will come here. And let me also tell you. Administrative Staff College is conducting the course. The expertise of company secretaries is only available with our institute. Therefore, we shall be the course director. We shall enlist the support of Administrative Staff College on the faculties that we need. But the course direction will be ours. For the first course, I invited Mr. N. Pal Kivala to be a principal lecturer. And that put the things in order for the rest for eternity. From now on, all the courses, Staff College on Company Secretaries were conducted by our institute. These courses became so much in demand that there was heavy demand, but we restricted for each course thirty at the number. Having achieved all these things, I said, now we wait what is going to happen. In the meantime, Mr. Prasad, the secretary and his predecessor, D.N. Marindar, called me saying that this time we have a big conference of company secretaries. I said, yes, sir, I agree with you. He said, but where will you have it? And then he said, not in Calcutta. Because you are very hostile people, they are for you. I said, yes, sir. I am also in Calcutta, but I am living with them, so no problem. What about Delhi? I said, so they said, no, Delhi, we are the governments, we are always with you. Why not have in Madras? I said, okay. So we had the first conference, mind you, first conference on the role of company secretaries held on fourteenth May nineteen seventy in Madras Colomer Hotel. And these two gentlemen told me, we shall make an exception and a new tradition that will not invite any politician or minister to inaugurate. We will take one session, Mr. Marindar said, I will chair one session. Mr. Prasad will take second session and you invite a leading industry from the private sector to take the third session. So that we can indoctrinate and disseminate the necessity for company secretaries from the Indian institute to be appointed. We did that. Conference was a thumping success. That was nineteen seventy. Now, time has come for us to move forward. In that conference, both these secretaries made it very clear that the role of company secretary is of a very unique, specialized nature. He is a generalist who helps the management taking decisions on all operations of the company, including compliance of the various laws. So company secretary is not a compliance officer. So this was well articulated, established. And it is in line with the Panorama Federalist judgment of UK and more lately nineteen ninety Cadbury Committee report about which most of you must be aware, and if not, I will read it out to you. The Cadbury Committee said that company secretary is the most important functionary of the company and the chairman and the board are entitled to the complete guidance from the company secretary as to how the board procedures should be implemented. And therefore, any decision about the appointment or removal of a company secretary must be a decision to be taken by the board as a whole and not unlike today, online or by circulation. This is the emphasis Cadbury Committee has said. It is in line with what nineteen seventy their role of company secretary, D.N. Marindar and Mr. R. Prasad visualize. And that is still the practice, whether one likes it or not. So that happened. Followed then we decided to have the first conference about which my learned president Manish mentioned that the first convention was held at Anshok Hotel nineteen seventy-two, inaugurated by the president, Mr. V. Vighery. What a great honor. Ninety percent of our members attending that conference, hall was overflowing, we had to stop the registration. It was widely covered and the president in his speech mentioned that very soon we are coming out with an amendment in the Companies Act like the UK's section one seventy-seven, providing for a mandatory appointment of company secretaries in India. We were all very happy that such an announcement has come. It was widely publicized. I followed it up with the next conference next year at Viganbon in nineteen seventy-three. And now still waiting, we entered the den of company secretaries in Calcutta, the next conference in nineteen seventy-four in Calcutta. By this time, most of the animosity against our institute had cooled down and we had the convention. And as soon as the convention over was over in nineteen seventy-four, came the Companies Amendment Act of nineteen seventy-four, providing for section three eighty-three A of the Companies Act, providing for a compulsory appointment of company secretary in every company with a paid up capital of rupees twenty-five lakhs and above, with the further proviso that any company secretary with a company secretary of more than one company will forth, will give up his company secretaryship. That was a master stroke. I myself was a company secretary at that time of seven companies, I gave up all of them. We appointed seven more members of our institute in my company and likewise, all the other companies followed suit. So this is how we are here today. Because of that three eighty-three, we have made a master stroke. It has been accepted and that's how we are today functioning. Now the question is, after all this having been done, I went back to my council that I have done three years being re-elected, re-elected year after year as a president. Time for me to retire because the main job is done. At the council, people became very grim. He said, how can that happen? I said, no, it's an elected council. Please elect another president. Matter went to the secretary, he said, no. We have to pursue you to stay. I said, no, sir, my work is suffering. Then the council decided. The fact is, if the institute has to function, then you have to contend with the dadas of Calcutta. And the person whoever is the president of the institute has to be from Calcutta in the present scenario. That was a tough choice. They said, we therefore request you, because none of us want to be a president at all. But since your amendment about quitting, you chose somebody, a senior company secretary from Calcutta, who had the personality to be the president to take steps to confront the so-called UK company secretaries. And finally, I located somebody who is the managing director of a leading multinational company. And I continued my support by, I remained in the council. And finally, I prepared the Companies Act, Institute of Companies Act to become a statutory institute in nineteen seventy-five, which I submitted to the ministry in nineteen seventy-nine, went to the parliament in eighty and it became a Companies Act effective one one nineteen eighty-one. So today we are a statutory institute. Having all this been done, now the question arises. It has become, we have been accepted as a core competence on Companies Act. What next? Government of India immediately came out with nineteen sixty-nine MRTP Act without telling us. And their officers, over enthusiastic as they are, issued notices to a large number of large houses, saying that you are voided in chapter three and simultaneous restrictive agreements. He should notice that your agreements are infringing restrictive trade practice clause. So I went back to the ministry, Mr. P. B. Manand, Joint Secretary, he said, look, you take charge of this law, please. MRTP is your baby. If you don't, these lawyers will eat you up. I said, okay. I said, I'll first have a conference on MRTP Act. I invited Mr. Pal Kivala because of my connections to be the chairman of MRTP's conference in Calcutta, chaired by Mr. J. S. the Chief Justice of India. The hall is crystal ball in Calcutta, in Bombay was overflowing. Such was the attendance. What was the issue? The two contentious issues at that time, it was plaguing the whole country on this MRTP, very ridiculously handled by the Western interests related to the concentration of economic power, which was misinterpreted. At the conference, we concluded with the vociferous support of Mr. Pal Kivala that every concentration of economic power is not bad and should not be resisted. Only that concentration of economic power which is detrimental to the public interest must be discussed and discouraged. But that concentration of economic power which is not detrimental to the public interest should be encouraged. What is the problem? This meant matter went to the Supreme Court upheld this judgment and that become a benchmark. This did not end there. This question of restrictive practices is still haunting independent of that. And the registrar, Mr. Sam Dugar, he sent hundreds of notices to many companies and everybody started crying. We had a seminar on that known as classification of good that Shimla, where is the workshop. I got a notice to conclude. Workshop in Calcutta, in Shimla. And we said that this is wrong, you are misinterpreting. And so, that was the draw. Having done that, we already established ourselves as an authority on MRTP Act. Having done that, we already established ourselves as an authority on M R T P Act. We came up with a manual M R T P, fifty thousand copies were published, all were printed and sold out and we had no more copies left. This copy I have kept as a memoir for myself because I am the author of that. But so much publicity had already gone for the institute on M R T P as an authority and the government, that the United Nations asked the Government of India, please send us a report on your M R T P Act, how it has been implemented. Ministry asked me to come and write this report. We wrote the report, we sent it to United Nations, they accepted with great compliments and they paid me seven thousand dollars, which I paid back to the institution as a donation. This is the monumental report published by the institute, sent to United Nations. This is the copy. This was not the end of its story. Newcomers in the ministry said, what is the M R T P Act? The whole world doesn't know what is the M R T P Act. They only know competition law. They said, fine. They said, so we change the name, repeal this act, pick it, competition law. I said, why? They said, no, it's a toothless tiger. I said, if a tiger is toothless, they kill the tiger with a toothbrush. If my duty is done, I get it, then just change, why, what is your problem? No, 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 no. So they wanted to change the nomenclature, they said. Ministry called me, they said, what, what have you to say? I said, sir, this is not right, there is no need. This is simply old wine in the new bottle, there is no change at all in this. Oh, no, but there is a new trend in the international scenario that we should change the competition law. So don't object it. It went to the Prime Minister's Office, they called a meeting of all of us, very intuitive as a president and the cabinet secretary, Mr. Narisna, asked me what have you to say. I said, sir, it is nothing but the old one in the new bottle, but if you want to go ahead, please ensure you have a competition advocacy program in place because the United Kingdom, when they implemented the competition law, they had competition advocacy program for five years. In our country, since we have already done the M R T P, you still need a competition advocacy program at least for one year. Cabinet secretary agreed, he said, fine, we will hold it up for the time being, after one year we will do it. But we asked the institute to conduct this competition advocacy program at the expense of the Government of India. We did that very effectively and we became a dada of M R T P, now competition law. We were paid twenty-five lakhs by the government as a mark of our service to this. That brings, I do not want to go ahead because I have been given notice. I only wish to conclude by saying that all this could not have happened without the support of the M C A. We are the three statutory institutes and no fourth has yet come. It has happened because the M C A constituted in nineteen sixty-three in Calcutta, accompanied a study circle which is functioning even today. They hold a meeting every last Thursday of every month, it has been going on for the last sixty years and they have been given award in the Limca Book of Records. I have been a regular participant there. One of the great features of this study circle is there is a camaraderie of exceptional character among the three institutes. So when armed with that solidarity, I approached the Constitution, let us settle and be reciprocal for papers and we signed the reciprocal agreement with Costi. Then I thought, why not attempt to charter accounts? I went and met the president, became a colleague, Price Waterhouse, who are also my auditors. He said, we are willing to consider it, provided you hold the meeting in Bombay because all the council members are Bombay and you host. I said, I will host. We had a marathon meeting of eight years on the reciprocity with C A and you will be delighted to know that there is a complete agreement on all the subjects, that we will exempt the chartered accountants from chartered accounting and auditing papers and they will exempt us from computer land, secretarial practice papers. This was agreed. I said, now I have achieved a milestone, but I was disappointed. They said, no, you have an article for six months. We said, two years, we will not relent. I said, how do you expect a company secretary to take two years, leaving having an article with you is ridiculous. You should change, bring it down to six months. Even there, I cannot take leave six months. Then there was a change in presidency of the C A Institute, my name, N. Krishnan became the president and he said, your proposal is meaningless. Our articleship is an article of faith. I said, okay, thank you very much. To today, that's a great substitution. I am mentioning this because we are together among the three institutes. We are very proud and very privileged that we are the only three statutory institutes in this country and although we are latecomers, do not attempt to see who is number one, who is number two, number three. We certainly are not number three. We certainly are not number two either, but I am firm believer that we are second to none. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. You have covered the journey of C S profession in a very superlative way. Friends, whenever we talk about our proud journey, it's about contribution of our seniors towards the profession. All these were not possible without the endless efforts of our, all the seniors. Many of them are not present now to see the growth of this profession. Many of them are not present in this convention and many of them are sitting in front of me. Here I take this opportunity to acknowledge the efforts of our seniors who took all the pain to bring our profession to this level. Friends, दुप्पियां सिंधू में गोता खोल लगाता है, जा-जा कर खाली हाथ लौटकर आता है, मिलते नहीं सहज ही मोती गहरे पानी में, बढ़ता दुगना उस्सा इसी हैरानी में, मुट्ठी उसकी खाली हर बात नहीं, हर बार नहीं होती, कोशिश करने वालों की कभी हार नहीं होती. I request you all to have a big round of applause for all of our seniors. Also, I have a big round of applause for Manish Guptaji and Dhyan J. Shuklaji for planning this special session. Please give a big round of applause.
Now I would like to extend my vote of thanks to Krishnan Sir, former president I C S I. We are indeed grateful to Sir for accepting our invitation. Friends, Mahatma Gandhi is the father of our nation who got the freedom for the country. Similarly, Krishnan Sir is the father of I C S I, who got us the freedom and the status of being an independent institute. Thank you, thank you, sir, thank you all.
Thank you, sirs. The journey of a thousand miles begins with one step and the journey is never-ending. Thank you, sir, for taking us through the engaging path of the profession. Would request, C S Manish Gupta, president Institute of Company Secretaries of India, C S Ashash Mohan, secretary, I C S I, to kindly come out to the diocese present a memento on behalf of the institute. Let's have a big round of applause, ladies and gentlemen.